All right, okay, great. We're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order at 6:05 PM. And our attorney is on the way. We will call our other attorney if there are any questions that pop up before this one gets here. I'm gonna start with the invitation. And if everybody will stand, please, and remain standing for the opening.
You're so inclined, please bow your head. Gracious Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to come out tonight to hear your input from the community to make decisions that affect this place that so many people, these guys, decisions being made here. We'd bless those who are traveling to try to get here, keep them safe, and all those to be safe when this meets this meeting. Allow things to be done and wise counsel to be given. And he who bless us, it be our purpose. All this request is unto the mother here. May it be.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, all the nation under God, indivisible, with whose majesty is our strength.
Thank you, Joe.
Sorry.
Go ahead with the roll call. And as everybody can see, everybody is in attendance. We have a whole council tonight. With that being said, we're going to we're gonna go ahead and go ahead with the public hearing. And we are going to be making a change to the agenda. We're going to add the public hearing vote or the vote on the imminent year prophecy and zoning tax amendment to old business number five. So we'll go ahead and you see some faces, is everybody on the screen?
Yes.
I'm looking for five and three.
That will be added. Under new, under old business, we're adding number five.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. And if Mr. Morris, if you would come up and talk a little bit about what was discussed at the landing zoning meeting and what the text amendment includes in Paul.
Paul.
Please.
This is case number WGCA 2501. It's a zoning text amendment to add to Article 8X use permissions able to reduce uses under Article 11 recreational uses, recreational aim crossbase. Specifically, in this case, it's a year processing. We did advertise correctly. The holding bay does. We're required to have an equivalent hearing space to be able to have space. We had planning zoning meeting on August 4th, which is five, six, seven, eight. During that meeting, they took into consideration imminent year processing application, zoning text amendment. During that meeting, they asked some practical questions regarding what would be done with the carcases of the animals that the legislature imminent year processing related to playing zoning commissions that he was a third party company to take the carcases out of the district and so it would be an organ process. Traditionally, he is the R certified as far as his business goes, but that doesn't have an effect on our zoning. Planning zoning do not file any adverse issues with this in my questions. They did recommend that people put this process.
Thank you. Is there anybody who would like to come up and speak against the text, the added text amendment regarding this imminent year processing? If anybody would like to come up and speak in favor of granting the text amendment for the imminent year processing in the ordinance. With that being done, we will go ahead and now close the public hearing. And we will look at this further in the agenda for a vote. We're gonna go on to agenda approval. First, we're gonna ask if there's any additions or deletions that anybody would love to make.
I'll make a motion to
Are there any additions or deletions?
Oh, that's okay.
That's all right. Anybody else?
You said additions, really, to the
Agenda. Okay, we're just gonna make that one change, that addition under old business number five regarding the vote on the next one. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mayor?
Yes.
We can make one addition.
Yeah.
We're not going to do it as a public hearing right now. We need to add this to the agenda under old business.
Got it.
Item five, or new business, item four, whatever.
You did that.
Right.
But thank you, Joe. I appreciate that very much. So we have added it under whole business number five, the vote. Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda with that change?
Make a motion to approve it, number five, add under old business, vote imminent year processing.
Is there a second?
Oh, thank you.
Is there any comments? All in favor, do you bring your hand? And it's unanimous. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second.
Are there any questions?
There's
Okay, that's all Linda first.
Okay. On the financials, the note about the municipal haven and global repair?
Yes.
Are those already paid?
They are paid. We approved it at a previous meeting and they have them paid.
They have them paid. And when the adjustment is done to the budget, does it go back to the last fiscal year? Does that mean what was actually done?
That is a question I'm gonna have to get back to you on. We have a meeting tomorrow with Sam Lattimer. And we've already met with Kyle. And I have that on my list of questions to ask. But more than likely, whichever year it goes into, if we need to make a just, an amendment to that budget, then that's what we will do at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay? But I wanted to leave that on there to show that you guys, it has been paid. Maxine?
Okay. So I'll move back to the financials since Linda's thrown that one ahead for me. I'm certainly going to vote to approve the financials as presented. But because I didn't know that the report was not done until the 14th, it actually included part of August rather than maybe just July. So one thing I'd like to do is to approve this as is for this month's input on our calendar to discuss financials in the fact report and why one might be better than the other and for the majority
In the works.
in the one session.
Yeah, we can definitely do that.
So we could just, yeah.
No problem.
And I may have to cover that at that time.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
My other comment, and I made myself notes because it's been a crazy week for me. I want to make sure I get it right. I realize it's not as purple as me this time. But the July 10th minutes that are in here, I had requested a couple of times for a simple change. I don't think we need to make a change in that because I would like it to be a matter of public record. So what I'm suggesting is that since the minutes do not show that, that all pretty minutes as is within this context, but have tonight's meeting minutes include a statement reflected in on July 10th. I asked for a consensus vote, council, as to whether or not we were, we were in support or not of the contract regarding the Hayfield cutting. And the council was polled and all agreed that the contract was acceptable, that Joe Morris, our city administrator, would proceed with the contract. And then I also wanted to make this comment because in the minutes of July 31st, there was a word used, and quite frankly, it was in reference to the disaster preparedness class. And it said that I had brought my concerns. And so after several conversations, you know, I don't need that word changed, but it hit me a little bit off. But I understand why. But my, my goal was an attempt to bring what I hope to be valuable information to the city, not, not so much concern. And I've had conversations with several people, those that returned my call and anybody that didn't return it, it would have, I would have been happy to discuss it. But I did want to make it clear that my only intent is to bring that information to the city officials and the general public to kind of express why it takes a village to keep a village running and to show how much work goes in to even something like our disaster preparedness. So any perception of making the city look bad was certainly not my intended. And there was some of that perception that took place. So I'm just wanting to clear that because that was certainly not my intention.
So there's no other change specifically other than that one? Okay. Are there any other comments or questions about the agenda? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Actually, I'm sorry, the motions are in the name. All in favor of approving the agenda, the consent agenda, please say it again. All right, unanimous. Pretty crazy week, guys. All right, everybody. We're gonna go ahead on to committee reports. And Rachel Davis, do you have anything for the DDA, ma'am?
No, just been keeping up with our favorite work and we have a meeting.
All right, thank you. We're gonna go on to planning zoning issue. And Mr. Walter, if you would like to let the council know what's going on, too.
Good evening, y'all. You do report in your packet. And I've updated it best as I understand with the work that's been going on in the city. We just, there's one active rezoning case which y'all just had a hearing on. We'll make a decision on later on the meeting. There's a couple of site plans under review. And I just received the last Friday, a set of maximum RX credit over there. And there was, I haven't gotten it looked at yet, but there's an issue on the sidewalk that was requested of plans that I need to take that and send it back to you all for consideration.
I saw that.
Okay, so it just so that I haven't got a chance to do that yet, but that'll be coming back to you. And then the number of active construction projects going on in various stages and, you know, active municipal projects going on, which I know y'all will talk about later on the meeting. And then a couple of inactive products going on. So I mean, it's right now because of, there's not a lot of zoning activity because of, you know, y'all are trying to get your some things going, but still certainly is limited activity, not counting the road construction. I haven't really issued that. But if there's any specific questions, we available.
We have a few, but we'll talk to them Monday probably.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe. If anybody in the audience, if there's any question, please feel free to go. Phil Morris, do you want to talk about any of those things going on right now? Are you gonna do that during your report?
I'll do it.
All right. Great, thank you, David. We are going to now move on to the library report. Lynn, would you stand up and give? No kidding.
I already passed the calendar.
Library not make it tonight. She's delivering her daughter to college tomorrow, bright and early, and it's by the way, driving in the morning. So she is a big here family business. She has left with us some information. And in case you all don't know or are interested, there's always calendars available at the library of all the events going on. If you have children or anything. There also is Camp Carazelle Penning Zoo coming on September 27th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's free. The friends of the library will be there. They'll be doing hot dogs, chips, cookie, and water for $5. But the Penning Zoo is free, and I know Camp Carazelle has lots of animals. They even have a camel. I don't know if that's funny, but you have lots of great animals. They're all very fly, yeah. There's also a flagpole dedication ceremony at the library. A new flagpole was donated, and there'll be a ceremony to like to celebrate the new flag and honor our community. And that's on September 18th, Thursday, 11:00 AM at the Roman Road Library. And everybody in the community is invited. So we'll move on. I'm sorry, Dana did a much better job than I did. Much better. Happy paying. At this point, we have public comment. Joe, would you take over?
Quick public comment. Any citizen can come up and if you can comment regarding the items. You have three minutes. You can type in your name and address behind the letter.
You can lead your step.
Hello, Ms. Johnson.
What I'd prefer.
If you would state your name and your address, please.
So I'm Ashley Johnson at the 76 Forester Cemetery Road. We wanted to, what David and I just say, you know, thank you. We know we had flooding due to the sewer expansion on August 14th. And to say, you know, thank you to IHD and Joe as well for coming out on Sunday to review things. We just really want to make sure that going forward, we have a really set plan. Our pond is the lovely color of Georgia clay right now. And so it's a big concern for us considering, you know, the ponds had legal issues in the past. The silt did get into our pond as well as our ravine and further down into the Johnson's pond. So just really want to make sure that we have a really well-dated out plan for this to not And I do have pictures and everything to just provide, is that okay?
Every thing you give a number to go.
Okay, that's a map on to show you. Do you want me to?
Why don't we leave the room and show me so that everybody knows?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sorry, we have public comment.
My name is Doug Bowlin. I live in Nashville Park Street.
What's your name again?
Doug Bowlin.
B O W E N?
B O W E.
Thank you, sir.
And I've got a couple of stories. About a month and a half ago, I called about the water runoff that comes down 81 that cuts down Park Street. It's cutting down through there. It's like blocked out to a whole underside of my driveway. But the city even gets someone to take care of it when it hasn't hit anything. There's one drain you see on 81 up there that's blocked off. There are bags in front of it. So every bit of the water that comes down 81 turns down Park Street, it goes right down my yard. And I'm gullible, it's like a lake coming down through there. When the drain's hard, it just wa, it's already washed the underbelly of my drain. And the engineer said, well, my drain pipe is too small, but that's not the drain pipe. I'm flowing the whole fuel coming around that corner that comes in from the right. So, and another issue is the 18-wheeler truck. If you look at the road between, when you turn on Park Street to that first speed bump, they busted that road into pieces. I've got cracks that come across the road going to my driveway. It has cracked my driveway from the vibrations. When the 18-wheeler hit the speed bump, I can feel the vibrations in my house. This road is not made that way. I drove a CDO for 30 years before I messed my leg up. This road is not 18-wheeler accessible. I don't understand why they don't go out, get a cemetery. I mean, all that truck traffic should be going that way. When they're building over here behind the courthouse, in the evenings, there was 10 or 12 18-wheeler slapped coming along up through here going over that side. But they're just wearing, it's broken out, and it's broken out to hold up. I said it's cracked by driveway. And this is, they need to do something about the blood flow. I shouldn't have to go out there and dig that car because that water's not coming from my property. It's coming from 81 around that corner. And another issue, the code enforcement. We need to have some assistance. The last code enforcement, I had a pre-classed position that I park, I handle parking park services. It's where I was told from the last code enforcement. But yes, the code where you come over the other day gives me great good hands because I had grass growing up a little bit to the gravel. It's raining for two weeks, but I wasn't gonna have to get up to get it. I mean, that's too extreme. When you got the old guy down here on 81 on the right, it's been 10 years. This guy's grass is three foot tall. I mean, go down there, take care of some. I mean, I feel like I'm getting harassed because I got two baskets. I got tags with everything I own. I pay taxes for everything. I shouldn't be able to keep a basket from my driveway because I would have to be harassed by it just kind of, I've been here 20 years. And I just, I don't think that's wrong. Might be following dead Peters, but but it just, I pay taxes here. I've been here for 20 years in this city. I mean, I just expect a little, there's grass. And you can see that there's gravel there. Yeah, there was some grass growing up, but I parked, I had two wheels of my Jeep in the grass and was sitting by that too. It was off the drive. Two wheels off the drive. That seems a little extreme to me. But I definitely, the water issues and the the road being cracked that very, like I said, that road is still smiling. And then eventually it's gonna start getting water on it, it's busting. But you can see major cracks all the way across. It's busted up and we turned all the way down to the speed bump. And I said, when they hit that speed bump, I can feel the vibrations in my house. So that's busting stuff up. I need to do something, either put a hole up out there to eliminate the big trucks where they take from that way or do something, we'll get the DOT. I wonder why the DOT takes someone to enforce that road. I mean, they enforced all the other roads. So you gotta do this part of the department transportation. They'll come in and set a DOT maybe right there and start writing tickets. When they start getting all these tickets, because there's a sign that says, no trucks. There's a sign down here says, no trucks. But nobody abates. 920 Park Street. But like I said, when you turn off of 81, you look from there to that first speed bump and look at the road. It is busted off in pieces. And we have no truck that'll get there, so all that water's coming. Like I said, if I was just, we're like, I'm driving some water. And I was told, well, actually, somebody wants to go somewhere. That's the end of it. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Anybody else? I'm gonna go ahead and move on to old business.
Part two, old limits near the mass notification system. These were brought as concerns with last year's hurricane season, some of the weather storms and some of the current events happening this year. We, council members, we did receive public votes for various mass notification. So the first one in the package is Civic Plus. Civic Plus also being considered for a couple of other items, such as website, it was staying in utility building. So their pricing could be adjusted for a bundle and package type deal. I would like to a little qualifier on that. I don't think it'll be adjusted so much that we obviously need the price that we do in this proposal. It's very robust, it's user-friendly, but maybe more than would be for the city, in the city's size. All the polls included the points. So anyone who doesn't usually receive text messages or email alerts, it doesn't include the authority to request a call number for a voice. So call them. The next proposal up ahead. Up ahead, we've received some various updates to their proposal and their pricing a couple of times since we spoke at work session. Mostly Civic Plus there, also we've listed some of the G I S mapping, text messages. We can do it for events, we can do it for weather alerts, issues going on in the city. And that goes for all of these systems. Most of them are very much alike except for these last three. As you go to the pricing points, the only drawback here is it's a subscription model. So it isn't necessarily a contact model. It does lock you into a subscription price, but it's not a one-time, you pay it, it's a monthly charge. So a little bit more of an administrative burden there. Their fee did drop from a one session to 299 to 199 monthly. And their setup price is now a profit. Price instead of $500 instead of 2,000. So that'll be an annual price to predict here to
Please stand up again, you know, Rachel Moore.
29. From the first year.
That's up ahead.
I think that's up there. So you're seeing what it was lost for a full year.
I'm sorry, I'm
200 to month plus?
Plus, yeah, so. Next is TextMyGo. We do already have a soft link to this company from Iwork. It's an offshoot of that parent company. TextMyGo is used by a couple of local governments near us. I don't have a complete list of that right now, but I did see that when I was going through some of the website poses. A lot of companies, especially websites that they've designed. And you can see a little text like that at the bottom, a little pre-advertising for this company. Like I said, very similar. All they do, G I S mapping, user-friendly. Yes. Only for the discount applied for the implementation setup costs. So total cost rate here will be $3,000. And then ongoing will be $2,500. Then the last one here is Prices 24, which is probably known by City Council program. I think we've used it in the past, I can be sure of it. I did have a chance to watch the demo, they painted a little plan that I would oppose. But once again, very easy to make. Cost-wise, probably one of the better ones. Total movement here is 1,500. And then one of you that have an increased handling, instead of 5% charge versus typical for a lot. The only thing I have was I did reach out and put a demo about three weeks ago, and this is not, it'll be all for a company. But one thing we haven't considered is administrative burden. If we have such a small staff, when you run into an issue, you don't have a lot of faculty, we don't have a lot of infrastructure pieces in place. So responsiveness is a key idea. And they didn't get back to us until council made the shout-out. But like I said, that is just a consideration. That is not an all-in-all. Pricing-wise, they did come in the lowest. And software, the new work just as well as TextMyGo or other.
Is there a motion by council? On this?
I make, I make motion that we go with the Code Red. The new name. I'll ask communications.
There's a second. That motion is dead. Is there another motion on the table? There are other options here. This can be tabled.
I'm gonna say I have a motion.
I would say I have a motion.
I would like for us to have more time, and I'd like to take this to our next session.
Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, I think.
Do you discuss them? All in favor? It's like if you give that full motion. Great, thank you. Let's go ahead and move on. Joe, you're on. Sorry, I'm trying to take over the job.
I'll see you. So next, I, I feel like council might be pretty excited about this one. I'm seeking approval with the intent of requesting a consolidated zip codes from the United States Postal Service. Uh, process is pretty simple, they have criteria that allows for a city to request a boundary review of your city limits to request a unique zip code. Some of those considerations are cultural uniqueness, uh, proof that you are glowing commercially and residentially. And, uh, showing that it would actually save, um, post office time and money as far as new route points and delivery areas. So the argument to debate is our, what we're saying is four one hundred of significant growth. Uh, difference of one hundred and five homes since the last census. Uh, current development with mixed use zoning that will accommodate approximately forty residential units and thirty business spaces. Uh, city will also be rose to a new two hundred and twenty-seven acre county park and twenty-six thousand square foot church that will increase guest flow traffic. City is also undergoing a sewer expansion, which naturally leads to growth in both residential and commercial. In twenty twenty, the US Census Bureau, uh, had our population at one thousand three hundred and twenty-two. And today it's estimated at above seventeen hundred. Um, so that's pretty significant growth in only five years. With the new residential and commercial developments, Walnut Grove is also cultivating its own identity separate from our neighbors. Uh, we also have the largest high school in the county as far as city size, which high schools naturally bring a unique institution or city. Uh, that's why I want to grow the green everything. Um, but as a unique incorporated city, City of Walnut Grove should have some unique zip code. Uh, further, we're trying to be proactive, not reactive city, we don't want to run into problems before. And then sort of kind of backtrack from their own zip code. And this is also the first step in trying to grow those offices.
Thank you, Joe.
Well, I agree with this.
Is there a motion to approve the seat and those boundaries in the unique zip code for Walnut Grove?
Yes, so moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
There is.
Okay.
Okay, um. We did not have a full discussion on this. Because it was presented to us, you know, right before our last meeting. Uh, but I've come up with some questions regarding that. Such as how do the residents feel about Mexico's and the businesses? Because that means if we go after our own zip code, they're gonna have to be making changes to printing materials. Getting used to a new zip code if that all goes into place. I realize a lot of people are asking for a post office. Uh, and we don't know if that will happen or not. But, so that was one of the concerns with that. And if our goal is for the post office just in the private zip code. You know, I'm kind of sitting on the fence with it because having gone through a zip code change and knowing what happened with that and the feedback. It just made me think that do, are we sure we want to do that without maybe reaching out to our general public to kind of get a feel? Because five, five or ten people saying we want a post office. And they realize we're gonna not maybe, maybe, maybe not get one, but take a zip code change. Just food for thought.
Other comments?
Yes, I think you're responding very good, Maxine. Um, I have talked with lots of our neighbors that, and that Lebanon's a good, or our city. They are dying for a zip code and want something that will, that will distinguish us from Lowy Mill, from Covington, from Oxford. Because we know we've got that many zip codes and we can't tell people we live on Walnut Grove.
Have you talked to businesses? Because that's a good point you brought up.
Yes.
I hadn't thought of it.
Yes.
What businesses?
I have talked to Papa John's and Domino's, I have not talked to Fred Astor. And I believe, uh, Mike, his name's Mike, that runs B P. He would love to choose a signage, but there's a, they're not, and he, his B P is already called the Walnut Grove B P. He would like a signage with a unique zip code landing bar.
All I've heard for the past two years is how much, uh, having separate zip codes, and quite honestly, we've noticed in the city hall. The issues administratively with having two different zip codes and trying to have a delivery and, um, emergency services and addresses. And the list goes on and on. If you ask citizens. What do you want to see? We want a post office. There's no way to have a post office unless you even start with this step. And this is not a guaranteed step. This is something, a seek, their approval to seek boundary review and review unique zip code. So this is not a done deal, but this is giving Joe the ability to go ahead and see it out. So.
Have we made any assessment as to the cost of the city? For the administrative changes if we get this through? Because that ultimately falls to the citizens and taxes and that sort of thing. If it's costly for us to change our printing materials and things.
I can make a promise, if we get a different zip code and a different, uh, uh, city, I have no problem crossing that. But it's not a high, um, high cost. We have so many things in place right now. I just can't imagine that it would be detrimental to the city budget. That's, that's something I think that it's always good to consider. I don't think it's something that reflects the city. Very good budget in place in Atlanta for cities.
You're, you're saying you have no problem, problem in that, that's kind of with me. Because, you know, some people would have, and they want to suddenly reprint everything that we got.
Yeah.
And so that would, that would be a concern.
Oh, anxiety, Joe. So there was a motion, there was a second, we've had discussions, is there any other? Is there a, um, those who are in favor of moving forward with speaking the boundary review for a unique zip code for Walnut Grove, please raise your hand. Or in favor, thank you, everybody. Okay. Next is moving the work session meeting time to ten AM. And I'm going to go to the council member who brought that up. And let me want to do.
I mean. Previously, it was at ten AM, um, uh. I feel that it benefits council to meet at ten AM for a work session. Meeting at six at dinnertime, um, people feel rushed. And a council meeting, uh, a work session should not be rushed. Sometimes they last four hours, sometimes you're having presentations by different professionals. Um, and you go, you would expect them to come during their working hours, not during their family time. And the work session, it went at time for, I'm not saying this in a needy type of way. It's not a time for citizens' input, as there's no public comment during work sessions or anything like that. So it's not like, um, we're saying, you know, the public can't be here, they're, they're all at work. Um, the time for the public to comment is during the meeting anyway, so.
Well, I mean, we report every meeting now too.
That's right.
All right, is there a motion to move the work session meeting time to ten AM?
Make a motion to move the work session to ten AM.
Is there a second?
All second.
Any discussion?
I do, when do we want to start this? Because I know that some, um, council members may need some plans for a ten AM meeting. So is that gonna be effective immediately or at the beginning of the new year?
Our council members, would the next work session be a concern for you, or could we start immediately?
What's the date of that next work session?
Oh, it's the twenty-eighth, I think, isn't it? Let me look.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the twenty-eighth. Of August. Yeah, we've already confirmed with you that that wouldn't be an issue. And Mr. Walnuts, sometimes you come, would that be okay for you?
Thank you.
Okay, is everybody able to do that? Can we start immediately?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Could we amend the, the motions to have a clue when we're going to start it?
I make a motion to, I'm in my motion, um, for it to be effective immediately.
Yes.
Just in case we change.
Um, all in favor? The change in this, okay, great. All right. Mr. Morris, ordinance twenty twenty-five oh three solid waste container amendment.
Listen, one, as we talked about my high school session, um, there were some comments that have been added to, to the council officials here. Um, within the second page. Off under number four, off the view, this was red. It's been, uh, putting on the black lines, so I didn't know much. But we had temporary containers to go off upstairs, especially with those research tools, but temporary upstairs that will not require a pad when a container is installed for less than thirty days. Um, temporary containers must be located on the property as deserted, it cannot be placed on public streets or easements without prior. Uh, this actually came up this past week and we have an issue that's. We had to make sure we told Joe, and this will definitely answer that question if someone searches for it. And then on the last page. Um, we did strike through a grace period for existing commercial solid waste containers, not sixty-four of us. Um, that was based on some advice from.
Sorry?
Um, regarding, you're going to go back and enforce this. A lot of people will comply in general with civic worship.
Yes.
Um, but forced compliance could be, um, helping people out over there.
There are motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five, oh, regarding amendment of the zip code of ordinances for the city.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash thousand three. For the changes outlawed.
Um, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll play that.
Any special?
I have a question, temporary container, and I was trying to find it so I could read, so it may already be in here, Joe. Do we define to some degree what temporary container is? For instance, an enclosed trailer. Uh, that's pulled off from property. Would that be considered a temporary? Container in this situation?
So we did provide examples, um, I think there's a reason for this to what a waste receptacle is. Um, I don't think that would be hard to enforce if someone, for instance, utilized a trailer or, um, you know, say it was even made home. Within the, you know, music, it's probably just a recent. So I think just some reasons, thank you for being involved in there.
Now, trailer, I was just trying to feel like a pull behind the truck trailer that's enclosed.
Right.
My sense clear.
But as far as the receptacle itself, I think there's a reasonable assistance to understand. It's gotta be the dumpster, it's gotta be trash in there. Um, I don't think the average citizen would. Try to argue that they pull behind trailer plus the waste receptacle. Correct.
What, a dump trailer? If somebody pulled a dump trailer up, to fill it full. Their own dump trailer could.
I, I was thinking more in terms of someone that would leave that sort of thing there. Pretty much permanently, you know, they fill it up, they take it up and bring it back.
Yeah.
Where it's kind of not temporary. But would that, would that classified as a temporary versus?
Those would still be interesting, moving device, you know, dump trailer. Uh, those aren't necessarily receptive. So those would be just looking to move items.
Yeah.
And if you guys have a question. All those in favor of bringing the motion? Maybe you just, you know, better. All in favor? Thank you. All right. Okay, nine hundred and five. We've already held the public theory this evening. We have heard from Eminem on several occasions. And we are going, I'm gonna open it up, is there a, um. Motion to approve the text amendment to the, um. Act section, number W D Z eight F twenty-five oh one, which recreational game processing and agricultural, cultural, building, business. There's any more amendments for minute uses?
Yes, I would like to go ahead and make that motion to approve the zoning tax amendment, case number W U U N C A twenty-five oh one. To allow your, your grounds of recreational game, that recreational game from the section. And that's okay?
Yep. All right, is there a second?
A second.
Is there any, just go.
Recreational game includes more than deer or doesn't? Joe, would you play a question like this?
So, um, it, it includes more than deer. Um, but there are certain game that you have very specific licensing.
Okay.
And, uh, certainly there's a sport, like one of the hardest ones to do right now is for. Um, so it is, it's more difficult. Um, so I don't think that's gonna be an issue in the city. Uh, you know, and people are also very restrictive with that as well. Um, I don't see that happening here. I don't know if there's any restrictions.
Good hearing, thanks for great made processing. But you can, some places you can, um, take like a hog or a cow into a air processing. There's a difference from what you could take. I can't expect a hog into a place that does dairy, because they don't do the same processing.
And, um, I'm not sure, you tell me. Um, can we say that if a person is allowed to use, uh, the recreational game processing, that they are D and R qualified?
So the D R is gonna fire that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll say this, as I said before, this thing's gonna actually regulate this area. Y'all are giving approval for who to do it, this thing is gonna dictate what. No doubt. It's safe to now.
My concern is if, uh, wants to improve this text amendment and this zoning. That anyone can do it, is that right?
In the same town. In the same as everything here, but anyone can do it in their house right now and not run a business.
Okay, as long as they're not running a business, if they're actually running a business, it has to be D R.
You should see my bad character. No, kidding. The H I A K is being driven.
They have to make same licenses along with the city approval of the.
You want to have a business, but anybody who.
Can process their own.
Yes, thank you. And they can process their friends here.
As long as you're not getting paid.
Right.
And if there's concern over something specific, you can also make a motion to that. So does, excellent.
I can't answer any question of Lady Jancy. We got any guests to do my best.
We're good, Mr. Mamu, but thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, is there any other questions or concerns?
Uh, yeah, just clarifying, we're not changing the zoning, we've made a variation in the, the text.
Correct, it's not apparent, it's, it's, um, just an additional limited use where we didn't have a definition of this very specific.
Two seconds, would that be done?
So it's going to be listed as a C, a conditional use? That would, that would be my question, is it considered permissible or conditional on this loading?
Um, right now, the motion originally was. If there is a specific condition that a council would like to attach that, that's.
I, I just want to be clear on how I'm, what I'm.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, all was our chat. All right. We are going to move on to new business. New, it's all. We're going to hook up my fires. We have a few people here tonight who are going to the public lit council. We realize a lot of this thing and a majority of this came together, they have a meeting today. Yeah, I wonder if you can come up and give a, a brief. Update on what's happened.
So, um, most of this history started in the riots here, uh, trying to get this tire shop. Where it's supposed to go, where it was like. Conditionally, obviously, things of that nature. There was some pickups the first as far as planning, uh, getting drawings and really just getting installed, keeping all. So I'm just going to keep the timeline short to training or review process. As far as these selling, making better process, which building, correct, and all, they have cleared those hurdles. Correct. And, uh, right now, they're really just in the design and simple plans, they just get those approved so they can begin. While making this happen. So on June eleventh, the design and several plans were submitted for review, your Veritas. On July second, uh, comments were received from your Veritas and forwarded to all involved in the project. Which is Anderson, Highline, and Grading, we have the name for it itself. And to the owner of Mike's. So we got those comments sent to them on July tenth, comments were addressed and forwarded to your Veritas. Um, on August seventh, we received notification from your Veritas that the title building chosen to house the. Tire shop could not be used for a tire shop. So it was more of a utility building and, uh, they use the word habitable, but they don't need. The, have a tire shop front. So that's what we're learning at the end, uh, committing to a new building, updating drawings that can be like. All the subject requirements through these trains. So we did receive a timeline today. By Mr. Jimmy Anderson on behalf of T B Show. And their timeline goes as follows. August eighteenth, building engineer to start up.
On the support line, yeah.
Also on eighteen, so the building itself, uh, we did receive notification today that the building that they did submit, got a quick review from John Brown, your Veritas. That building can be used as a tire shop. So they have selected a building that will suffice. On ten thirteen, turn plans in for review and receive comments by the twenty seventh, address conference and re submit any plans if there are any comments. November tenth, I received permit by then. On November twenty fourth, move foundation and slab. On January fifth, receive building and start, um, correcting the building. On February second, twenty sixth, complete correction and start inside and outside mechanical, spreading and finish. And they're hoping to receive the CO by May first and move in. There is a lot to this, uh, that's why we have requested all parties involved to include, uh, the county fire marshal to be here. And they're going to speak on their piece of the business themselves, because they were the expert in that area.
Mr. Brooklyn, could you come up, please?
Mr. Martin.
This is John Brooklyn, Fire Marshal for the county.
Good evening, yes.
Good afternoon, you mean.
South of Pukee.
Okay. And he has been, uh, working on this while we've been working on this throughout the whole thing. We've been in contact over the past couple of days trying to, um, of course, work with our business. To make sure that, um, that they can continue doing this, that's within the city, if that's a possibility. And I'm going to let you go ahead and tell council what you think and what you found and what your expectations are and your deadlines are.
All right, good evening, uh, I'm going to start with the timeline as well. December seventeen, twenty twenty four, Mike's Tire Depot was given a. Not a certificate of occupancy, but a certificate to work in the old Marolais building. They did bring certain things up to code on their behalf. They were only supposed to be there for a few months. I think they were given the wrong information. Since then, uh, they were given a six month, uh, temporary use from the fire department. That time expired and we, uh, upped it to August and that time is about to expire as well. I was told that they could possibly have something done by December, but I think that was with the old building. Then have the new building, of course, that's going to take a little bit longer time. I do not have a problem extending their use until the May deadline. Uh, I did come up with, I went out and did an inspection today. And I come up with five bullet points that has, that has to be done or conditions for them to stay. Uh, there's no ADA, uh, Americans with Disabilities Act, uh, on that property. The current restroom that they have is four foot ten by four foot ten. And to have a ADA restroom, you have to have a five foot turnaround radius inside of the restroom. So that is a big concern to the city. If a customer came in that was ADA, could not use the restroom, you could be somewhat of a risk in that. So I proposed, um, for a temporary to use an ADA portable restroom. I don't know what the city, uh, feels about that. They could store it inside one phase, um, they could put it on, on the property, but they need some kind of ADA restroom on the property. There's also no ADA parking on the property. And to facilitate ADA parking, um, because they're going to be here for seventeen months. Is going to be, um, one parking place inaccessible with a van and loading zone. So the parking place to the van and loading is sixteen foot, it can be divided by eleven foot parking place with five foot unloading zone. Or an eight foot parking place with an eight foot unloading zone. With your, uh, handicap sign at seven foot with van accessible underneath it. It does not have to be professionally striped. You do not have to have the ADA logo on the ground, the sign is code. So it can be striped by spray paint, if that's what they need. There was several, uh, open electrical that I spoke with Mike's Tire Depot on, um, and told them that they would have to bring up the code if it was extended. Those are still in place, so they need to secure any open electrical hazards. Going out today, the front bay, uh, the fire exit was blocked with tires and wheels. We do not, our code does not consider a rolled up door a fire exit. So those fire exits need to remain clear at all times. And then, um, the use went a little bit further than what we were told in the beginning on the front side of that shop. So we need to add some emergency lighting in the front bays and that's probably only going to be one emergency light. That probably, and like I said, I do not have a problem extending it to May. I think he's valued business here, uh, and I'm not looking to put anybody out on the street. But first and foremost, Walton County Fire has to keep their citizens in mind and their safety will be. So for that, thank you.
Got your question? What is your expectation of when these would be completed?
Will be.
When would they need to get these done for you? I know you've given that, you've. Suggested that they can stay in there, um, until December, if you get them completed by December and then stay until May.
Right. As soon as possible. Uh, I would, I would put a thirty to forty five day benchmark on it. Just to make sure that it gets done and does not fall through the credits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any question?
Say you're not putting a specific timeline on them, they, getting these things done when you will approve a extension for them?
Uh, I mean, it's up to the business, I don't think the building owner is going to do it. I guess going to be put on the business owner. I would like it to, to be as soon as possible because I don't, I don't want Walton County or City of Walton Road to go under any litigation. Any of those matters, so.
Thank you for coming tonight. Is man working with us, we appreciate it.
Bad mayor?
Yes.
As the city attorney, the ADA stuff makes me very hesitant, cautious, I think you'll, uh, no doubt. As the, the fire marshal was stated, I would like to figure that as quick as possible. Me, I just poke Joe and asked him, as far as the spray painting of the parking lot, I think we'd like a little bit of a higher standard if we could. Get that, only because spray painting is one thing, but professional lining and actual ADA apartments are another thing. You don't need to really consider this statement seriously, the ADA is. So. That would be my recommendation. You could get it done in thirty days, I have, she had forty days, but there was thirty, forty five days, as the fire marshal says, would be my recommendation as well.
Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Brooklyn, the county, can you paint it? Don't they do paintings?
I believe they do.
Do you have any other companies, public companies that you're paging?
I, I can't make any reference bases.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Okay, do you suggest that we call any county to get either of you?
No, 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 no.
I want to clear.
No, no.
You're all right.
I was just curious. Um, Mr. Anderson, if you'd like to come up and.
Ask you questions?
Yeah.
I'm Jimmy Anderson, forty seven fifty, Old Bringer.
Mr. Anderson here is, um, is here for this evening representing Mr. Schellmann, who is the builder. So if you have any questions or anything you want to say, put them in the box.
I, I, I don't think it's hard to ask you. While we're sitting there with that plan. Nothing cleared, nothing started, why is this taking this long to get to this point? Because when we voted this in back in, uh, actually, we gave the extension, I think it was last October.
I got pulled in in June. At that point, we started engineering, I met with Mayor Joe. We started engineering and that finished, took three months till the end of last week. So, that's why we're, where we're at. Building, building is easy as a credit plate, getting this permanent. But we're on the right track, Anderson. As far as the extension here, I think it's listed as fair and feasible. And I understand when someone's spraying, literally spraying, but we do have a company that does. Stripe them, then go to the party. Spray paint in between.
Has, the building has been, was correct.
We should have a comment, right? You got to put an empty deposit down, not doing that till y'all tell us when to get them in. Because there's no sense in it, if y'all are going to say December, it can't be done by December. We, we won't, we can't even get the steel building delivered until January. Because it takes sixteen, eighteen weeks. But yes, Monday morning, they'll have a lot, we'll deliver a check tomorrow at the extension.
Sir Anderson did share with me.
He's got a sign.
And I had to hear it to you guys. It is signed by Mr. Schellmann, it is not signed by the other company. But they are holding off to see if council approves, makes it out to Mike's Fires.
So, so Mike's Tire, who is not hold, no sales and not holding up anything has to do with the building here. Quite frankly, I'm concerned because it feels like I heard this before. It looks like I heard this before, we need to do this now. We rushed up, we had extra meetings, we paid extra money for you guys to be here. Uh, for our attorneys to come in, for, you know, for those people to be here, such a, you gave y'all. Extra care to get this done and to protect our business that we have here. And I feel like y'all sat on it for whatever.
That's crazy. I mean, I'm, I'm not an engineer, I'm at their mercy.
Mr. Anderson.
It makes me mad too, I mean, I was, I was very frustrated. Especially when I got the email last week that said you can't use this building after three months of trying to get engineers to send it to me. I had three of them that were smarter than the other, each one was smarter than the other.
Mr. Anderson was brought in at a later date, after Mr. Schellmann started the process. And when he came in, there was already a building chosen by Mr. Schellmann and it was not a building that he used for commercial purposes. The plans were not clearly stating what was going to be done in that building. So between the engineers and a few other people involved. It was too many levels and too many people. We have streamlined that, we have been in touch with the person who would be doing the review of the building. That's who you guys, that got a email, uh, confirming that this building that they are interested in now purchasing can be used for commercial purposes. And so it was digging through all of that stuff, yes, it was slow to start, definitely. But I think with everything that has been done in the past couple of weeks, uh, when we were notified that this building was not original, for commercial use.
And that's, that's when we first knew about this, was very recent.
Very.
That's sweet.
So let's say this.
I'm going to make that assumption that this new building, it's more expensive than the old building. Has a contract been worked out where we're sure that, um, Mike's tires is going to be going into this building? As we're looking out for our business owner and the city of Warner.
Yeah, me and him just saw a lot of good, yeah, he's ready.
I mean, I understand he's ready, but has anything with the lease been changed that's from Anderson?
So they've done an extension.
So, the initial lease that I signed, we had not changed anything. I spoke with him, we have a verbal agreement, did that help or anything that we're going to make work? I mean, we've already, we've already signed, I mean, we have signed the lease already. That's already there.
I'm asking Anderson, nothing with the lease that you'll be changing when you're signed? You've signed the lease though?
Yes.
Okay.
I've also changed the policy. For, for certain stuff.
So the stars aligned and you get your delivery in this building by January, when are they going to be good?
I've got the last day of August, I mean, April, I put late first, should have put August thirty first. It'll be the same like five months.
Justin, do you know when the lease expires?
Uh, I don't have a plan.
Do you know, Mr. Anderson, when, when the lease expires?
I'm just saying, I'm supposed to use this building, Bill.
Are you guys speaking of the due diligence?
I'm wondering if he's heard that Mike's tires, that they go in and that they were being leased.
I mean, I think, man, I can be in touch with them.
Sure.
Talking about more expensive buil- building, I don't want these guys to end up with, you know, I don't know what their lease agreed, but suddenly. They're looking at within six months, tripling their rent for a.
That's a question.
We, we spoke, we spoke about the, uh, difference in cost of the first building and the, uh, building that he's looking at now. We spoke that I may have to pay a little bit more money, a little bit more. We could maybe graduate into that, if I'm going to get through it.
That's really between Mr. Schellmann and you, and Justin Myers, and now there is.
We, we, we have really, I think I was thinking about that. There's no doubt.
I'm not concerned about the cost, that's none of our business, I'm concerned about, um. We're leaving you an extension to stay where you're at, because we're waiting on this building. I don't want somebody else to go in this building and then you have nowhere to go, is what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, I think, I think we can put a nail in that by the end of the day tomorrow. Well, I mean, I think, I think we can put a nail in that by the end of the day tomorrow, and we can make something happen. Or we can do that.
Well, I mean, it was a good idea, that's a good idea to be sure, and if we can, then that could be a good idea. If that is what council would like to do there. Any other comments or questions?
No, I just think we need to, uh, cover that they do get a new lease agreement, because that part, like, um, Erica said, we want to make sure we're retaining our business and helping them out, because that's part of why we did this and what we might.
Is there, Justin, you have anything else you want to say, or?
Um, well, Mr. regardless of that, I can be in, with techy tomorrow, I mean, uh, no, we'll wait to, but, I mean, we'll, we will get something, if y'all need something, and writing that says the entertainment, what it seems to be, we'll make that happen. I really appreciate y'all.
Hang on one second. Jimmy, could you, could you go ahead and have a seat? I want to ask Justin, come on up here, gang, I thought. Hey, Justin, come on up. Regarding the, um, the different things that the fire marshal has said has to happen, are you in agreement with them, and will you take on those responsibilities?
Yes, I've actually already ordered almost everything, other than the, uh, extra emergency lighting, everything else ordered. Already.
Man, can I ask what your choice is with the restroom?
Now, the restroom, we're gonna, uh, go the, uh, if you'll let us, go the porta potty route.
Okay.
I've already reached out to the company, emails. I want everyone's everything to.
I want to go ahead and talk with Joe and Joe regarding, um, rest, porta potty restrooms on a business site. And will that be a part of an approval? In this, allowing for the extension of time, is this one of the conditions? Can it even happen? Can a porta potty be on a business? Anybody know?
Well, if this was a new big building being built, they would have to have a portable restroom out there for the duration of project. What I would interpret is the fire marshal has given them an option, option one is to go retrofit the building.
Yeah.
Make it wider, which they don't own.
Right.
And it may be, may not be possible, and once again, I, I, first is having this on site with a clear understanding that it's you, it's, it's to help make them compliant.
Sure.
I would think that it's reasonable to understand that they would have a properly serviced, and there wouldn't be any sanity issue, because the company they would contract with would do that. I think that in the interest of, if council chooses to move forward, grant the extension on that Malloy building, that's a reasonable accommodation to make. Which is certainly more reasonable than saying the only option is this, to make a building, or have to retrofit a place for a restroom, and go do all that insurance. Uh, from, from a permitting standpoint, it's, uh, it's all known to be a not permanent condition. Uh, they, they're pulling, they would probably need to pull a permit and do that work, if they don't have one already, and you could, you could couch that the restroom components, the components of, I'm sure you have a sanitary code about that, that already covers it. Does that would give you some, is someone questioning why they're there, or this is why?
Quick.
I would like to say also, the, the current restroom they have, um, the size is not only the issue. Um, they're gonna have to do major renovations to get the, the water closet or the toilet close to the wall. Uh, because it has to be within eighteen minutes from the wall, and right now it's at twenty-two, I believe. So, they have major renovations if they, if y'all made them go with that route. Um, that's why I come up with this second alternative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My concern, counsel, I, I don't want it visible from this. Or I don't think that's what we're looking for, so if it's behind the building, if it's in a bay tucked away.
I can do that, no problem.
Um, I think that is something that.
You guys.
When you tuck it away, you've got to make sure it's accessible for, for, and things like that, like your wheelchair, like your mobility.
Mayor, I think the, the point vaccine is probably a more important location, and if y'all wanna see it, it needs to be ADA compliant.
Sure, sure. And to live.
Maybe in several days, you can, I think that could definitely be important.
Well, I would also talk with Mr. Pukue, just to make sure it's accessible and.
Uh, he wants to.
Okay. All right, is anybody else we need to talk to? Are there any comments or? I have one more question. Jay, when we did this originally, we changed the, um, the zoning, right there to accommodate. And I remember during that conversation, we said that at one point, we will have to turn it back. I want to make sure that if council decides to do an extension today for the project, that is still the case, we don't automatically revert that, we have to make that change ourselves.
So you want to do a separate zoning action to change that back?
Okay.
And, and what I remember from the last agreement is, there was an extension granted by the council, who gave the mayor power to extend that by herself for a certain period of time, or past, or at that time. And so y'all are granting another extension, so whenever this is done, whenever they move to the new location, it'll have to be a new zoning action, re-advertize, like every other zoning action, for y'all to change that back.
Okay, thank you. This is a reminder, guys, you did grant me the option to do it for two months. When that time was coming up, I contacted Mr. Pukue, he also extended it until the end of August. Our extension is August eighteenth, which is Monday. That's why we're having this discussion tonight, that's why this is kind of throwing it on you, and asking you to make a decision tonight for the business and our community. And so are there any other questions, comments, statements? Consider, if there is going to be a motion made tonight that you must put in there, some kind of a date, and you also can offer up any kind of conditions that have been discussed. So with that being said, and I'm going to go ahead and open up the floor to see if there's a motion of any kind, that a council member would like to present. To extend the, um,
Before that motion, may I ask Jay a question?
Joe first.
Uh, Jay, if we were to set a motion that puts the mayor and or administrator kind of back in, in dealing with all of this, can, could we have one where they write up a sort of agreement that includes all the things we've discussed tonight that we're concerned about? And then do like an email consensus for us, vote that we're in agreement, that's what we intended, that they could do maybe like by tomorrow? So that we're kind of seeing in writing, uh, what's, what's in there?
This is what I, this is, yes, this is what I recommend. It's, y'all make the motion to extend it to whatever time period you want to, dates are gonna be preferable, with whatever conditions you want in there. And then the, and make it subject to an agreement between the city, the city manag-, city administrator approves, and the applicant approves. And make it subject on that. So that way, if there's not an agreement, what you vote on is not the place. Makes sense.
Got that next?
I have a motion.
Give a question?
I have.
A nice, okay. All right.
I think a motion to extend Mike's tires at May first, twenty twenty-six, with a condition of having a lease agreement that does not expire prior to May twenty twenty-nine, and that fire marshal concerns complete within thirty days from today.
Second motion. I'm opening it up for discussion because I have concern about the ADA. We didn't focus on that enough in that, in that function. They need to be professionally installed, not just painted by the guys.
Okay, anything else?
Um.
Bathroom.
Yeah. Um, yeah, but that's, that's for me. Anything else, guys? All right.
Okay, well, I mean, that motion to also include the bathroom not be visible from the room, but be ADA compliant, and the parking lot lines be professionally painted.
And any other ADA requirements of the building be included, could you?
Well, that includes, I said, that the fire marshal concerns be completed with thirty days, and all ADA stuff is included in that.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I see her.
Is there any for this session?
No. Mayor, in my view, you're asking, uh, that business owners to bear any.
Will that work for you?
Yes.
Is that gonna work for you, Mr. Anderson?
Uh, I don't.
Okay, all right. All in favor, please raise your hands. If you dance. Okay, congratulations. And thank you, council, for working on this last, uh, I know it was lots of pain, and Mr. Pukue, thank you, and I appreciate it. Sorry, Joe.
I have one question, but it's a city, are we actually required, am I trying to be important to?
No, sir.
Is that?
No, we're not doing the meeting, but we are not being.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Jay and Joe, for all that. And we just, why are you did that? We've talked a lot in the past, you did. We're gonna go ahead and move on to the, uh, discussion on the retirement benefit exploration. This will not be a long discussion, this will just, I'm doing that. Thank you.
So, just a little prelude of this, um, when I first came in, one of the concerns brought to me by employees and council, was to try as you look into our benefits to improve retirement and healthcare. Looking at healthcare itself, does not seem like something we can do now, with our average amount of employees. But something we can't forget, and I'm starting to follow in our retirement. Uh, retirement is a pageful for a city, especially a city our size, where our budget is not allowed for excess in salaries. Um, it is one way to, you know, we can control a little bit of how our salary works, and often that's gonna help us make this. Those benefits really sometimes have a waste of power. And it's also GMA, and that's where this proposal comes from, um, not from exploration. And the very top part is probably the most critical part of all this. I decided to look into the pension program, coming back to our salaries. It can be kind of hard to sell people on what the salary is, and get them to stay or even retire with a fourteen-seven B program, because they're putting some of their money into that, versus a pension program, which traditionally council threw some budget towards, or employee, employee time that themselves. So, full-time retirement, I have set sixty-five, early retirement at fifty-five, GMA will have a reduction level per year under sixty-five, so each year there's gonna be a lesser payout under negative sixty-five. Uh, testing period will be ten years, to nest for early retirement, or, um, full-time retirement. The full-time percentage has had one point five percent, and this is roughly in the twenty-seven percent of all the cities do this point. Uh, we want one higher than that, that's fifty percent. Uh, but for this being our first full-time retirement, one point five is a way to work towards it. So our rule, I put in there a high five instead of high three, so high five would say the average five-year most earnings employee, and then that's what you would use for your full-time. Two pieces of information here, just building that benefit, I will share with GMA that fees do not cost a bottom, or will make that make a difference in annual pay by a city to fund us. But those are the things that we would see after they give the cost of it. Um, as shown from the MAs, that five percent of annual salary budget, um, is kind of what protects the fund, a retirement account, especially for officials. But there are concrete administrative fees and different things that can increase it, as far as a small issue goes, it might be a little bit more than five percent. Um, just because those aren't just, just because you have less of yours. Um, so our rate down using five percent would look something like this, our current full-time salary wages are two hundred and seventy-three thousand, and, oh, roughly there, so I'm not gonna get into the specifics. Full-time positions, city clerk, deputy city clerk, public works manager, two public works crew members, and city administrator. Uh, we need to deduct the city administrator's salary, as the standard negotiating that, which is gonna be seven B. Uh, traditionally, city administrator, city managers are not in the same city for twenty years, or even longer than ten years. So, uh, that benefit usually does not reach that person, so it's, we're not going to negotiate that. So we'll just deduct that, that's a set two hundred and three thousand, uh, with five percent, will put us right back where our budget begins, for retirement benefit, that we improve this year, at ten thousand. Um, and there's a couple ways we can do implementation piece. That is, you can allow someone to bring the years they already have, so say you have an employee that's here for seven years, you can allow them just to bring it, and then the city will pay them for those years of that. Uh, that way we can start funding the account and money marketing starts, reducing that interest when they're retired. Or there's a binding policy where the city can require them to pay a certain amount to have a kickstart with the budget when they're retired. Be able to take those benefits. Um, those things we can consider, um, but I'm identifying here that it is already a premium deposit, and my intent is to, um, utilize that deposit, which is a fifty-cost study completed, which is twenty-five hundred dollars. Uh, there is an option to do two different plans, um, at forty-five hundred dollars, I do not intend to do that. Um, just the one plan, so what I asked the council, is if you have any recommendations, um, for a different formula, or acquiring in retirement, that you can give those to me, and then I can propose an attach, thanks for listening, uh, to email them to you.
Thank you. Such a, I'm getting.
It's, I'm waiting, getting.
That's true. All right. We are doing, we're doing the, and I mean.
Thank you.
I'm checking.
You need to take the trade?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. We will go, we're gonna go ahead and take the break for about five minutes.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You really, yes, to your staff, to you, you know. Thank you.
I got a long break.
Hey, the guy behind you, he's a reporter.
He's from Titan.
He's a lot, they did, oh, yeah. It's like a superman, you're talking.
Y'all go pay with me.
People are, people are tired of that.
I had, I had somebody in Loganville, city council, explaining, sorry, Tyson said next to us.
We are about to embrace, we are on live right then still. Okay, and we'll go ahead and move on to the next, uh, item on our agenda, and that is discussion of the proposed events calendar, and this is something I've put on here. And it is my thought, we are still in a position, uh, that we are, um, working very hard to continue to get things in a row, but I need to, that we have a few events, um, for our community to come out and celebrate. And so it is my thought that I am. And so it is my thought that I am suggesting that we do the Christmas tree lighting event again, the Veterans Day celebration, and Georgia Cities Week, um, where we incorporate a citywide cleanup. And that is what I suggest will be proposed for this year, this fiscal year. There is a somewhat healthy, um, community event line item in the budget. Um, a lot of these things don't cost a lot of money to do, but I'm also interested, um, in seeing if any of the council members are interested in, in doing any of these events or planning these events or working on these events? Or bringing in citizens to work on these events or anything like that. And I do want to go ahead and nail down our Christmas tree lighting. It is thought that we will continue with that tradition.
All right. Uh, I will go ahead and put my name in the rating for the Veterans Day celebration. I will be happy for you to, um, help plan it where it is and, okay, get people here. And here. Be good to that.
Georgia Cities Week and the Georgia Citywide Cleanup, we're gonna be discussing that with other city students. It'd be really great to be able to have a countywide cleanup. Um, and that is something that we're gonna be discussing, at least bringing up at our next, at our municipal meeting that comes up next Thursday. And something I saw that the city of Monroe has done, and I've included it in your case over was that, um, I think it's picking up 150 releases, uh, something along those lines. But it's something that they've done in the past, and I believe they might be doing it again in the future. And that could be the, quote, real ideal. To get everybody in the city. We can also do things like hire removal and, uh, we can get grants for that. We can apply that right now and do that. Is anybody else interested in helping out with any of the events? I mean, or is this gonna be just all hands on deck?
I'm more than willing to help, Mayor. I don't think I'm in a position to take charge of anything. Uh, other unknown circumstance, but I'm certainly willing to pitch in and provide all the help in planning and...
You can always go to our schools and our, our high school student groups, and actually some of our elementary school student groups. Um, Linda, are you in, interested? I know you've always helped with events and everybody, you've done lots of events. Is that something that you're interested in or not interested in? And I know you've been at a...
I would like, I would like to be a big part of the, um, the cleanup in, um, April, and I think that's a great time to do that. I would like to bring to everyone's attention for the Christmas tree lighting. Um, I know that November 28th is open, but that is the Georgia versus Georgia tag game.
They're gonna play anyway.
We may not have a great big turnout.
Unless it gets broadcasted on a theater screen.
So I'm going to say that the 22nd would probably work better.
So we go back to doing it before Thanksgiving, as we've done in the past?
Yeah.
How does everybody feel about that?
I'm good with that, 'cause otherwise you're waiting way past, or good past Thanksgiving before our trees light up. And a lot of people start lighting up the tree even Thanksgiving weekend, but I think it's a nice time.
Let's do it November 1st. I'm not kidding, I'm gonna start decorating November 1st.
Our deputy clerk has been kind enough to get in touch with our previous Santa from last year also. Who had such a great response to him.
Yes.
Um, and he is available on both those dates. So, okay. I actually will probably go ahead and see if I can find some citizens who are interested in doing that Christmas event. And, uh, go ahead and, and, and take it on myself. And of course, I know there's lots of people who will have. So, we'll work the staff and some of the folks. Okay. Okay. So that's what we'll do. We'll go ahead and get those three events for this fiscal year. And we've got a couple of people who are interested in getting them out, so we'll go, we'll go with that. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. So we'll go on to reports, Joe.
We can post it for... They said most of their time was mowing grass throughout the cities, maintaining, we need our veterans blowers and movers. Uh, as you know, just like many weeks, you know, the summer, they had to play a little bit of catch-up, 'cause all the rain. You can't believe how much it's been, so they've been playing catch-up most of the time there. Um, we have 350 service trucks. Uh, that was an issue there where that's something to do with a little bit of, to the loss of pressure from transmission crew. And the first time they set it was a linkage for it, and second time, they're, they're not sure if they'll take it to the shop. Uh, so they're trying to get that worked through right now. Uh, the light floor is also giving them trouble, so they have a temporary one that's, uh, kind of given by going toward them. Uh, I can see they usually use the caution lights, so I'll look forward to that right now. Uh, they replaced the yield sign on, uh, the corner of City Hall Sewer Plant. Uh, they're working to keep the pond low when they can spray, 'cause obviously they can't spray once raining. And then, uh, trying to keep up with the drains themselves throughout the city. Uh, something I added here in, um, we had here lately out the past week, looked at a lot of the sewer water, uh, a lot of the coworkers, things that they do. Uh, he's gonna come up with a full list of things that are city responsibilities, things that are not. Uh, that way he gives a clear opinion from our engineer. Um, also gonna be that along to our city attorney. Uh, that way he has company as well when planning on having a follow-on meeting to find which ones are priorities, so we can begin planning, uh, some of our, some of our issues.
Our city clerk.
I'm gonna start with our satacations. Um, Walton County, we had five. Georgia State Patrol, we have three. Tickets, um, code enforcement tickets, we had four. And, um, as far as the rentals go, um, for the renting of the pavilion, we had four. And Ballfield was, uh, 12. And the accounts, uh, the general operating account is $545,365.48. The sewer, uh, service district is, uh, $3,288.49. The 2019's lost is, uh, $948,125.76. Money market account is $1,321,398.41. The DDA account is $90,112.68. The sewer plant expansion is $435,968.41. The LAS sewer plant expansion is $206,017.83. And the 2025's lost is $120,222.13.
Then, I just, uh, do we have anything for code enforcement?
Speak freely. Um, code enforcement is, has been asked by me to be a little bit tougher on review defenders of anything. You know, when he first came here, he was just trying to get compliance. That's still the case, but we do have some that are taking advantage of kindness, mistake again. Uh, so he has been asked to be a little bit more assertive. But still going through the proper process when he does that. Uh, especially this week, uh, we brought in Captain Shop, had a discussion with them. Uh, from that Captain Shop construction area, we do get a lot of runoff. And, um, one of our systems did a loop to that today. That's where a lot of that comes from. Um, so we are addressing that issue. We have a mitigation plan in place for them to start correcting that property until we start doing something with it. Uh, further, we have the nuisance property that we discussed in our last work session, and he's working through our attorney's office to, uh, continue on.
Thank you, Phil. All right. I only have a couple of things. I am announcing to council that we are going to be having a council retreat. You'll get an email in your email on Monday, um, with dates that you can choose from, and hopefully they work out for everybody. It'll be a full day. It will be outside of the city. We'll be talking about team building and relationships, addressing key issues like sewer ordinance, land use plan, ordinance revolution, et cetera, and all kinds, strategic planning for the future. So please, make note, look in your emails when, uh, we're gonna be asking you for some information and some feedback, so that we can plan the retreat the best way possible. Um, also, something we, for council members, you will be receiving that report that you, uh, received tonight, unless at our next work session, we decide that it's a different format. You'll also be receiving a general ledger, basically, of every al- money that came in that month and all the money that went out. Checks, everything. Okay? Um, that way, there is no question about, well, where's this coming, where's that going? And so I just wanted to share that with you tonight. The two highlighted numbers are the same highlighted numbers that work on the report that you got, if you will see. Um, if there are any questions about anything on this report or general questions at all, please take, make a copy of it, highlight it, and send it to Joe with a comment. Okay? So make him guess at what you're trying to ask. Please be very clear. And if there's a suggestion, make that suggestion also. Ultimately, it will be up to Joe about where things are going. And he will make those decisions. But just if you have any questions or anything like that, please do not wait till the meeting. Let's get this updated, updated for Joe's, uh, bringing to his attention, so we can handle it. Okay? Um, other than that, this week has been extremely busy, as always it is. We had continued to have people just stop by. And, uh, I'm very happy about that, very proud of that. We had somebody stop by today. And, uh, his cap was, and that's something, so he's, and he sat down with our code enforcement officer himself, and, uh, we were able to just chat with her and reassure her about a few things, um, that she had questions about. And people just continue to come by, and, uh, I can remember birthday of being in office, in the office, where citizens didn't come by so much. I'm very happy to hear that they're continuing to come by. So we must be doing a little something, right? Um, and I'm happy about sitting down and chatting, kind of breaking the day. Um, and that's really it. There's been a lot going on, but it's, sometimes there just is just too much to share, and I ask that you all offer us grace. Uh, I was so happy to see you ask for an update, uh, of Joe, and Joe was able to get you an update on what happened and what went on. Know that if you ask, um, for an update on something, you're gonna get it. Linda was in the office the other day, and she asked a question online, and I hadn't been able, had a chance to get back to her. I said, have you heard back about this yet? And she said, no. And I said, okay, this is what's going on. So please offer grace to the staff. There are so many things going on. There's changes happening. And, um, we can't get back to you in one day or two days, or sometimes three days, or we won't. Just be patient. Send a little reminder. Our staff are working very hard to do the best job they can. We still have a relatively new staff. They're still learning a lot of their positions. And, uh, just offer them grace. Okay? That's all I'm asking. Please. And that's it for me tonight. We are going to go ahead, and, uh, we have an executive, executive session on the agenda tonight. So I'm going to move into executive session. So, rules?
For what purpose?
For personnel purpose. And we will make sure that's on there too. I made a motion to go into... So, sorry, I'm so sorry. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor? All right. Hands. Let's go in. Folks, I don't know how long we're gonna be. It might be a long one, it could be short, but we will be out. And you're welcome to stay if you like.
You have to be an executive such a person like that.
Hello.
I'm just tired of getting so sad today. We love...
Last, last night.
I miss it.
Until I'm tired.
But I'm always tired.
Well, I'm just... Thank, thank you, mother of rich.
You don't always be tired.
Tired of stories.
Sorry.
They have a little pain, they got tired.
If it can't, if it can.
I think the cure was said one day. They're looking high for a shot.
Might only giant. Jay's on here.
Okay. Shall we, uh, make a motion to go back and turn?
Hang on.
There are lots of these.
Are we good?
Yep.
Yes.
All right. Need to remove you to come back to the general studies.
So, Lou. Is there a second?
A second.
Any comments or questions, discussion, all in favor, please bring your hand. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion. Let's review this.
Is there a second?
A second.
And all in favor? Hands. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Sorry for the late on this... Seriously, it's all...